Good morning. Welcome to the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Shenango County IDA Board. We'll go ahead and we'll call ourselves in.
Wancher here.
Raymond here.
Given.
Corey here.
Burton here.
Agenda item number two, reading of the IDA mission. Our mission is to promote, develop, encourage, and assist in the inquiry, construction, reconstruction, improving the maintenance, equipping, and furnishing industrial manufacturing warehouse, commercial research, recreation facilities, including industrial pollution control facilities, educational or cultural facilities, railroad facilities, and continuing care retirement communities. Provide financial assistance and thereby advance the job opportunities, help general prosperity, economic welfare of the people of the county of Shenango into improve their recreation opportunities, prosperity and standard of living, as adopted March twenty fifth, twenty twenty-one. Did everybody get a chance to look over the minutes? Hopefully. Need a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Need a second?
Corey's second.
Great. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, will both?
Wancher by.
Raymond by.
Given.
Corey I.
Burton I.
Financial report of December the first, twenty twenty-one. Terry, you're up.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make two quick notes is that we are still cleaning up the books from twenty twenty-one, so the financial statements are pretty close to final, but we still have some bills and invoices coming through that will have to be appropriated. So next month it should be a much better view of what twenty twenty-one looks like. Also on that note, in Cero and Company, we'll be starting our audit the middle of February for of twenty twenty-one financials. So currently, our account receivable has a balance at just over three thousand dollars. We still know that financing was in cash flow, which we'll talk about in a little while. Our depreciation expense for the year is still being finalized, but right now that number is five hundred forty-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred, five hundred forty-nine, eight hundred seventy-six thousand dollars. Our total assets total just over one point four million dollars. We have accounts payable, which we'll get to in just a moment, and our prepaid rental income, the note number six, is the deposit for the building that the incubator building that we own, as well as a thousand dollar deposit toward a purchase to buy. That's why that number's a little bit higher. Our total liability and fund balance is just over one point four million dollars. On our age receivable report, we still have the amount sitting out there for the Shenango, Norwich Shenango solar project that we still have not recovered. We have continued to send them the invoice and the bill. I'm not sure why it's not being paid, but we're continuing to try to pursue that amount. That's for the annual pilot fee from twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, and we'll be getting ready to build twenty-two pilot fees here shortly. Under our age payable report, we have NICE egg bill. Just a note too, that that money is coming back to us. We are paying out all of utilities for the incubator buildings, but our leaser pays us back when we build them retroactively. So even though you'll see it on our report as an expense, we do for keep that money. Under our statement of activities, I want to just make note of the pilot projects and fees. So we already, we're starting twenty twenty-two slightly better, but twenty twenty-one, two of the pilot projects have still not closed. We expected them to close by the end of December. That did not happen. So the Coventry solar project, you'll see we're below budget for that because that project didn't close in twenty twenty-one, and you don't see the Guilford Wind project that would show up in our twenty twenty-two, and when that project closes to involve updating on that, that part of the report. But you'll see, that's why that section looks like it's under budget because we did not close those projects this year. We've done everything we need to do in terms of the IDA, but just the finances have not closed. So if you look at our year-to-date budget, our total revenue was one hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred, one hundred sixty-three, seven hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. We did a little bit better than we budgeted, and that mostly has to do with our, our, the new rent that we have done at the airport building. I apologize. Year-to-date actual, the one ninety-three number, sorry, the one ninety-three thousand, which was better. We had budgeted one hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, and that, that difference is the airport rent that we received. Under expenditures, we already talked about the things with the budget that we were fixing for twenty twenty-two, so there's nothing of note there. I just want to know, our total expenditures year-to-date right now, actuals, are one hundred fifty-two thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars. Again, just we'll be finalizing all of our twenty twenty-one bills here this month, so we'll have a final picture for next month. Currently, we do have a positive net revenue for the year. So we had a very busy year, a lot of projects that we brought in, some new found revenues. So we do have a positive balance at the end of the year. And that is all. Any questions?
I'd like to ask about this Norwich Shenango solar pilot fee. So there's three years, any explanations? Three years they didn't pay? Is what's going on?
That, that is correct. So I, I didn't realize that it, so when I came in in twenty nineteen, I didn't realize that the bill for twenty nineteen or twenty twenty had not been sent. So we sent the bill out for in twenty twenty, and then again in twenty twenty-one. We found out a few months ago that the management company that was paying the bills was a different company. We updated our records, we sent the bill out, did it for all three years. I don't have an explanation. I, that, I don't know.
So they were in receipt of the invoice?
Correct. Yeah, we, we built-
So there's nothing that we did or didn't?
No, other than, you know, being delayed the first two years of it and sending the bill, but it was part of their agreement, it's part of their pilots, part of their contract, that is due. So I told Kathy Jo, just tell it, we're gonna-
So if they continue to ignore the fees, the pilot fees, does that, does that avoid the pilot?
If they're out of compliance with their pilot right now, yes. We could-
So at this point, we could shut that entire pilot down at this point?
Well, I would, I wouldn't go to that step. We would take-
I understand, but I mean, three years certainly, I mean, ninety days is one way of looking at receivables in three years.
Right. I mean, what probably the next step should be, we, we emailed, we've sent letters, is probably to do some more of a formal legal letter, have our legal team put together something a little more, you know, demand for payment, and tell them that they're-
Do we have a contact there?
Yeah.
And have we called them?
Yeah.
And what did they say?
I, I'm not the one that made the call. I don't know.
Right, but has someone called in? In three years, to me, it's certainly a set of example for other pilots when you can just ignore your fees. There has to be some type of consequences for-
I mean, we're, we're doing what we can to pursue it. A legal notice is probably the next step.
Is there anything else in our agreement with them for, for not paying, for not payment other than just term pay and file? Is there really conditions in the contract?
No, it doesn't really get into like collections or whatever. It, but yeah, I mean, they're-
But they have roles and responsibilities. Say you, well, that's the contract stipulations.
Correct.
They have to pay it. If they don't, is there an exit ramp for the IDA?
Right. I mean, again, I wouldn't go there right now, but yes, we do have a, I would say strongly worded language from our attorney, that just, you know, that costs us money. So for three thousand dollars, you know, are we ever yet that point where we want to go ahead and do that, have them, have them do a strongly worded letter from our attorney? We could also send something certified mail to make sure that they're signing off on it. And then if that doesn't work, go the attorney route?
So what you're trying to do is set the stage for a possible action against-
Right. I mean, we could threaten action. I mean, I-
I'd like to see something done. Is this an ongoing work? Is this the one that's north of town?
Yeah.
Up on the hill behind-
The Evans, this is the Evans.
Yeah, that's far. Oh, Evans Farm. The Evans Farm, really?
Yeah, it was the first one. It was the first one. I would say you, just with my sense, it's concerning here, three years that they haven't responded to the same. I would think your first step now would be send a certified, you know, mail, you know, just request. So we've got every documentation. So they just can't pull it off saying that we never, didn't realize that we're not providing.
Document.
That's why the certification would come out, right?
That's a good approach with a minimum for sure.
Yeah.
The start of it, then. You have to at least, at least have a course of action and they'll know that you mean this. It's just three years.
Well, just, and to clarify, it's not that we've been billing them for three years. It wasn't discovered that, again, before me, the process of billing pilots was not really clearly defined. So our bookkeeper at the time was under the understanding that they were just going to pay us annually. She was never invoicing them. So they didn't get an invoice from us until a year ago.
And this could be, this could be similar to the deal with cash going in the school-
Exactly, exactly. So-
All right, but are, so are pilots follow this procedure now, right?
Well, I, yes, I mean, we build them-
But back then, before you, you said there wasn't an invoice, or there wasn't a receivable report or anything?
No, not like that. So when I, when I, we built it for the first time, January of twenty-one, and I said, bill every year, they should have been paying this because regardless if they get an invoice from us or not, they were obligated to pay that. So they've been ignoring this for a year, not three, but yes, they should have been paying it all upfront. So it's a little, but yeah.
Right, you would think once, sorry, it's a good-
But yeah, I can, I can do a certified letter.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, we need a motion to approve the financial statements. Need a second? Any more discussion? Hearing none, will both?
Wancher by.
Raymond by.
Given I.
Corey I.
Burton I.
Great. Bills and invoices. Doesn't look like anything out of the ordinary. Some of us have already actually seen them. Again, the airport utilities will come back to us. And so we'll walk along and landscape, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Good. So need a motion to approve the bills and invoices?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, will both?
Wancher by.
Raymond by.
Given I.
Corey I.
Burton I. Great. So in the interest of our guest's time, we're gonna go ahead and move up one of the new business agenda items to this point, and we have a presentation today by Everything Bagel.
Yeah, so last month, I shared with you that we had the, an IDA proposition given to us about a way to invest, and we've been looking at ways to expand our portfolio and invest, and, you know, we've been looking at sort of what's the new thing, and this food hub, food manufacturing is, is really hot right now, and Matthias Westner and Tyler have opened the Everything Bagel ring. I'll let them give you a little bit more details about their business, but we have an opportunity to invest in a building in Bainbridge, which we give them the ability to expand their business. So we'll let them do their presentation for you, and then we can talk a little bit more about it.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Matthias Westner. I'm actually born in, or he's been sitting in New York. I'm not too, not maybe far away. And this is Tyler Bookout, one of the other co-partners that we have in our venture. And we wanted to bring in a little sampling of the product, so you can see what we've been part of the work at. We haven't really, although they are available in Norwich, we have not really tried to extend too far because of our extreme demand, and that we've already kind of tapped out our limits as far as what we can even produce and retailers to be prepared for. Right now, we have seventeen retailers in our local area, and so we are a wholesaler of bagels. And the bagel market is actually a two billion dollars plus a year industry in the United States today, and a fast-growing sector. The other thing is the fastest-growing sector that there is in the food industry in general, which is the new whole food, whole food, new industry in it. That is what the industry is seeing more than any other growth in this kind of sector. Our plan is to take this all the way eventually to a full national chain and a franchise opportunity. And we would like to be, to be dough and whatever still re-here in, in this local area. We're gonna create what is called our dough factory, dream idea of where all of the bagels will be hand rolled and made re-heared locally, and then shipped out eventually, you know, frozen, and then taken and baked on-site to franchise locations. Now, in the small phase one model that we're working with, it's all about community. We didn't want to come in and try to step into a very small retail market and fight with every local coffee shop and whatever to produce our product. So we immediately came into the wholesale idea. This creates, you know, a, a revenue velocity within the community because all of our ingredients are purchased locally. We've already partnered with Q-Tex Honey, the largest honey supplier in New York City. We've partnered with Winchester's maple syrup. We've partnered with Covered Bridge Farms and Brookville Farms to source our eggs, and then we get all of our flour right now distributed from the local distributors at Bean Ginsburg and so forth. And so our idea is that, you know, when the Loxley Lounge, I'm gonna use an example, because they still serve bagels that come from a distributor that's made outside of the area and whatever, and they do sell for a very low price, and it does help, you know, their, their retail end of things and whatever, but this creating the velocity throughout the community and seeing the support that we've been able to generate with just a very small amount of money put in and whatever. We would like to ask for your help to grow this business to a level that could be a real community leader, and not only wages and cool job opportunities, but also just to bring a mix of commerce into the area and to support all of the local retailers that we tend. We've got seven on the waiting list right now, and we just can't produce anymore. So we'd love to feel any questions at any minute.
So this building you're looking to purchase?
Yes.
A lot of you got, not only expand your operation, but my understanding is it's a good shipping location?
It's an excellent shipping location because, so right now, as you can see from some of the notes that I've put to you or whatever, you know, our, our main area focus has been Sydney, New York, and we have radiated out a little bit, but we've got such a demand rate in our small hometown where we're all from and whatever, that we haven't really been able to expand much farther. Bainbridge is a perfect center location for us for to reach all the way to Albany and down into Venetian, all the way into potentially Scranton and upwards and around. We would like to see a fifty to sixty mile radius of this central location as being our main area focus of where we plan on distributing locally. And within that region, we never plan to put a retail slash franchise style location. We will always serve the community and a, and a very, you know, through the, through the wholesale way completely. This building is forty-nine hundred square feet. It already is equipped with three phase power. It also has a loading dock capability and the way the, the way the, the ebb and flow of how everything is set up, we literally just need to put up some whiteboards to make it kitchen compliant. We're gonna add in a walk-in cooler, and then we're gonna bring in a bagel cauldron and some ovens, and be ready to full-scale our operation. This, this building would allow us to potentially get to an output of ten thousand bagels per day quite easily with the labor that we currently have. As you can see, based on our current equipment, and this is because, not because we didn't want to buy anymore, one, we can't fit anymore in our location, and two, the building's power is not sufficient to allow us to add in the things that we thought it would. We're trying to scam this a little bit, you know, we, we're moving forward and making what we have. So that three-phase power would have been another seven thousand dollar investment to get that to where ovens that are of a capability to really produce bagels properly and utilize our labor in a more efficient way is just not possible. And so it is possible in this building. It is a great ship-out location, and, you know, we're very excited about, you know, the, the opportunity that moving into a state like that can provide us to expand.
Are you looking, so you're gonna expand your distribution, which means you're gonna need to get trucks and drivers?
Correct.
And how is, how is that cost gonna be for you?
So-
The startup part of it anyways?
The startup part of it?
The initial outlay?
Well, so right now, we, the way we've got our distribution set up and, and making runs, personal vehicles at this moment in time is how we have been achieving it, and we will use cash flow to finance the purchase of, you know, we've looked into the Ford Transits. We've looked into a couple different options of how would be the best, you know, speed rack and stack system that we're gonna move around once we get into those higher quantities. Right now, with the quantities that we distribute to each location or whatever, that's not such a big deal. When you go to the grocery store, which will be the next big step in approaching the Wegmans, approaching a price dropper, we've already had interest from Rabidow Fuel Group come to us and talk to about the potential Loxley Fuel, the convenience stores, about the potential, and see, they already have all of the cold storage distribution. So we would only have to drive most of the products to only three locations. And so one truck in the very beginning will be enough to get us a, a lot of the way. And then the second thing is that, once we increase to this new volume, we will be intaking a lot more material. One of the things we've looked into is how we can become a main hub in the flour distribution in the area. Currently, there is no one in the northeast anywhere closer than Albany that is distributing truckloads of flour monthly. In our area alone, just with the two P3s that my friend Mike Gavin owns, and the amount of flour that we use with our bagels, we'll be able to intake a half of a truckload a month of flour alone, and then be able to sell off the other half to also local P3s and whatever. And we plan on using that distribution route of when we're moving flour around in between to also be a part of the overall distribution of the bagels, so that it will warrant using trucks. And I do have a trucking partner. His name is Sepharino Martinez. He's the owner of Confiable Trucking in Bainbridge. And so we do have access to semis and box trucks, to leases to Penske, and I am actually very familiar with logistics and trucking because my main, my first business is, is live in that production. And so we ship stages and that kind of stuff all over the country.
Have you presented this to the village?
Of Sydney? Yeah, so actually, the village of Sydney came to us on day four of opening and said, hey, you know, this is amazing. We all love these. We can't get enough of them. How can we help? And so that meeting with John Redentez set me on the, you know, to where, to where we are here. He's the one that, you know, and, and yes, the, the town in Sydney plans on giving us a grant to purchase a sixty thousand dollars worth of equipment that we would like to be able to offer a bit. And if not, Tyler and I are, are planning to move forward to, you know, finance that on our own if necessary.
How much would you pay for this? Have you talked to them yet about your idea?
So the village of Bainbridge, through Terry Shunk and the four towns forward, and John Redentez, whatever, yes, Bainbridge is, is in the loop on this and loves the idea, and we have a very motivated seller. I think the building is well worth the money, knowing what this man put into it all for all these years, and he even had pictures of all of his teardowns and everything he added and what he did and how he rebuilt it and blah, 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 all the way up through. You know, I, obviously, we'd love to have it appraised and inspected by professionals, that know more than I do, but face value, it seems like the best thing for the buck. And now we do have another offer with a fantastic facility in O'Niana, the owner of the Bokey Bread Company, Jim Comano contacted me and took me on a tour of what he's got. Now, other than having a walk-in cooler, he has an alternate setup that we'd be able to crank a ridiculous amount of vehicles out of because of the size of his mixers and whatever and so forth. Personally, we would like to stay local. I mean, it was the town in Sydney and four towns forward and Carrie and all you people that like came and wanted to be, you know, helping and be a part of this mission. And I'm a local guy. I grew up here. You know, my father worked in Norwich for years at Commercial Display and Design, and so, you know, Norwich, Sydney, you know, I, I would like to stay here. There's nothing wrong with O'Niana. It'd be a little farther for us to drive. We'd still have, you know, some things to consider, but I, I just think that the best overall solution for us moving forward and what could be really cool for this area, you know, I would love to stay local. And so that is important to me. And so that's what brings us here, is because, you know, John thought that it would be a good idea to present to you guys to buy the building and sell it to us over time, and we'd be interested in, in, in any and all offers concerning what you guys could potentially do to help us move forward and really make this dream come true.
What, what's your timeframe?
Our timeframe is as soon as possible. Honestly, as soon as possible. I, I, I know that, you know, I can hit the street tomorrow and double our sales within a few phone calls, and we could be tripling them, you know, a week after that. We have retailers knocking at our door. We've spent very little in marketing, the word of mouth and the social media campaigns that we've been able to drive and trust through, have retailers coming to us from all areas that we're, you know, as far down as the deposit, as far out as Morris, and, and out and around. And so we're not able to get to them yet, but we are, you know, diligently hoping. And then also to, and further answer your question about distribution, a lot of our customers do never reinforce, so they'll come pick up their bagels direct and bulk. And so that's something that we obviously will try to continue to swing as much as possible to keep things logistically sound and to keep costs and expenses down originally initially.
I got a question for you on the, on the, on the business model itself, is it gonna be a wholesale, you're gonna be basically a production facility?
Correct.
That's what you're looking for, is you're saying? And then what, what percentage that becomes the extra flour or the, you know, you were talking about wholesaling flour, so you're not really creating the finished product, not a lot of value added to flour. So what percentage is, is flour, what percentage is?
So in the business model, we don't even have the flour. We're, in our business model, we're giving you the current price per product. So in other words, I don't have large buying power. Our flour is about fifty-two cents a pound, you know, and, and so like that's what we're paying right now. It would dramatically reduce that price, believe it or not. Price goes from twenty-six, twenty-six ninety-five for a fifty-pound bag down to nineteen-ten when I buy by the truckload. And when you're talking about eight hundred and fifty, I'll be coming in on seventeen pallets, that's, you know, you know, about four thousand dollars worth of revenue a month that could be, you know, added into the model just with the flour distribution alone. And very little work considering, like I said, two P3s in our operation is half of that truckload every month. And do you know how many P3s are around here? So getting the rest of that flour out the door would be very easy, I think, in my opinion. I'm, I'm confident that I could sell the rest of that truckload. And then eventually maybe even go to two and be distributing one and a half entire truckloads just of the flour and adding eight thousand dollars a month in potential revenues to business.
So flour is kind of a commodity in mind, just to-
It is.
So what, how does your flour, what's the exceptionalism, the flour that you can triple, quadruple your business revenue?
What's the exceptionalism?
Well, I mean, it's, there's other flower providers, right?
There are. So this is going to, this is going to King Arthur Direct. And so we can offer any of their products, not just the flour that we use. And so King Arthur offers a myriad of fine baking products and all different sorts, every kind of flower variety you can imagine. So it would be the, you know, the stuff that KHP chefs need or whatever, whatever, whatever could be provided. And so, you know, our flour is, you know, what everyone else gets. It, it, it's just that Ginsburg is not even a full distributor according to King Arthur. They don't buy by the truckload. And so that's one of the reasons that they can only offer the prices that they can offer delivered, and why they have been in quantity orders before they deliver to your door. And so, and that's where we'd be able to easily step in there and offer a discounted price as well as put some money in our pockets and drive our costs down from the back end.
Well, it seems to be the, the primary focus is finished bagel sold wholesale.
That's it. That's-
Flour is just some kind of complimentary ancillary-
It's a complimentary ancillary part that also can help when, when we talk about providing, you know, adding trucks to the fleet. When you're talking about like taking on the expense of adding trucks to the fleet, the flour, and, you know, so in other words, those trucks aren't just there to deliver bagels. They're also can deliver flour, so you can get more output out of them for the investment. It's really more of an ancillary than the trucking thing, because our prices, even if the price we're paying for flour right now, the bagels are very profitable, you know, they're very profitable. And when we turn five thousand bagels a day, you know, there's, there's a, a net revenue of, you know, over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a month. We, we operate that six days a week. And even with paying people twenty dollar an hour wages and, you know, it's, our full monthly expenses will be around thirty-nine thousand dollars a month with between a hundred and thirty and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month of gross revenue.
So what you'd be looking at is a much larger facility with a loading dock and-
Yeah. So we're operating in a space that is about six hundred and eighty square feet in total.
What are you, what are you looking at for a building? When you think of your long-term plans, what would work there?
What would work for that?
What do you foresee as a production facility yourself?
A full-on, full huge dope production facility where we'd be cranking out fifty thousand bagels a day to go to a national model would look like a twenty thousand square foot facility with a reloading bay dock, also roll-up door access for any kind of ground whatever. And a third of it would basically be cold and frozen, a third of it would be dope production, and a third of it would be the baking and packaging area. And that's how like, you know, but I, and I, and I have a very similar plan for the forty-nine hundred square feet of how, you know, it'll be broken up and whatever and, and ready to produce. But it's, I mean, it's not, it's not as big as necessary to go to that, but I don't know if that level is necessary within the next couple of years. I think that being able to start this facility as it is and, you know, and make that the, the starter home for the big dream here. So that also, that if I don't end up taking a national franchise and going further around the big capital investment and that kind of thing, you know, it's still, it's not size seventeen shoe in the middle of Bainbridge. You know, that's also a part of why I've got scale where we have it. Five thousand bagels a day is a 5,000 bagels a day is a very easily outputted, you know, an outputted number. For instance, roasted coffee in Sydney sells upwards of 80 of them a day at retail of $3.85, toasted and smeared, roasted in Sydney. And, you know, that's just, that's just one tiny little coffee shop in Sydney. If you were to take the 128 around those locations when we land that deal, that just means that all of them will need to sell 38 bagels a day just to hit our 5,000. And that doesn't include that. We right now can't even give Weaver's Market, Pine Ridge Grocery, Billy Bountiful, Trollback Farms, all the bagels they're ordering every week. We can't give them what we've been because we want to keep it spread out. But we can't even fulfill the orders that our clients are asking for now. And it amazes me. I've been waiting for the fall off. I actually told them like, you know, we're going to have this hype and then we're going to lose about 30% of the sales once everybody eats something, whatever. But no, in a town of Bainbridge, Sydney and Unitaville, its population is 61,000, we're selling 2,000 bagels a week in just those locations and they're asking for more. It's just that's all we can give them right now. So demand has steadily increased since our launch on October 11th. October 11th is the first time we sent a bagel out the door anywhere and it was a roast in Sydney. So it's been, it's been crazy that we're, you know, we're already a cash flow. And, yeah, one way or another, we're going to find a way to make this work, whether we continue it organically and fund it with cash flow like our original plan was. But because of the opportunities that were presented to us from John and whatever, and Kerry graciously inviting us and all of that, you know, we thought we would see where that took us first. Because it's an excellent opportunity to kickstart this much faster, no doubt.
Nice. Can you tell them about just about the job creation?
Yeah, so that's another big thing is that as soon as we hit the ground running, the only reason we haven't hired right now is we don't have the space. We can't, only two people can efficiently work in our kitchen. We're in a galley kitchen is where the majority of our process happens. And so that's another reason why we haven't really been able to add any labor. We do have plans of, you know, I want to be conservative with it and say, you know, two, two full-time employees immediately the second we've got ovens in the door and we're ready to rock. And then we're going to need four to six more within the first year. And then within the first two to three years, I've seen no reason why a dozen people wouldn't be hired just for all of the operations that need to happen from our distribution to sales and marketing and so forth and so on. And I know that's not a huge amount of people that you're talking, you know, initially, but it is, you know, a decent job creation. We plan on paying a minimum of $20 an hour starting wage. So I believe that's fairly competitive for, for the area and, and the skill sets being asked for. So those of you that took it by, what do you think? What do you think of the product?
It's good.
Thank you.
Good. Very good. Thank you for bringing it.
My pleasure.
Spent a lot of time figuring out the process. More than recipe and ingredients, it's, it's process coming up with the bagels, in my opinion, anyway. If he can tell you a little more about that, is he's, you know, master, master in the kitchen, which he can apologize for his, I hate to drag my other kitchen this morning and he's going back as soon as we're done because we've got orders. And I even find myself in the kitchen often picking up shifts here and there when it's necessary because it's just four of us right now. But yeah, it's been a pretty cool journey. And we spent a lot of time in the marketing, branding, have a beautiful look and whatever. We apologize that we did not cast our little slideshow presentation and whatnot, but we will send that and package it up via email so you can check that out. We do already have a full online website. We do have backend development almost completed for online direct customer ordering around the country. We have tested the viability with sending these packages to Los Angeles, Phoenix, Dallas, New Orleans.
Florida and Texas?
Yeah, Florida and Texas. So that we could find out like how well they ship and this and that. And actually, St. Louis, which is actually, we've seen clients out in St. Louis. You know, we've, we've, we're, we're really ready to take this to the next level and we would love for you guys to, to give us a hand. But yeah, as far as timeframe, of course, it's as soon as possible, but it, you know, we're also willing to grind, we were, we were willing to grind this out to begin with. Our plan was that we were going to be working like this for the first couple of years to be able to stack up the cash to be able to go to the next level and whatever, anyway. So that was kind of the plan.
So yeah, so I think if, you know, the board, if this is something that you think you may be interested in, and I know we've had these conversations, what I would, would ask is that you let me know feedback, but then we would actually put together the whole financial package for next month's meeting. So the details on the building, working out their, you know, their financials, what kind of a deal we could possibly, we could possibly make. And then, you know, moving forward, it would be to actually, you know, put, you know, purchase the building and make the rest of it happen. But I'm not asking you today to say, yes, we want to purchase the building, but that, yes, you know, this is something that you're interested in. You think this is where we should expand to. Let's move forward with finding a way to make that happen.
What, what surprise number?
175 is what he's currently asking.
He was asking just a little more than that, right? He was asking for a little more than that?
No, no, that was DCC. So I told our, our, our LDC report, which is part of the IDA, I told them at the meeting last week that they, you know, may come to us looking for maybe some sort of a loan if they needed it, that that was an option, but yeah, which is, it's great, it's something that I'd be. Yeah. No, Brian says on both. So Brian's like, oh, no, yeah. So yeah, so right now, while they're looking for us, the building, it would be very similar to Cascoon. We would do probably, I think we talked about like a 10-year lease.
Correct.
Where it would draw down. At the end of it, they would own it.
You're going to talk about pilot.
Yeah, very similar to Cascoon, so like a pilot, but through, through a long-term lease, which our attorney can, can work out for them.
Are we in the details of the building? What, what's the square footage?
49 square foot.
So you're looking at 49 first, right? And said someday you could get up to 18 if things.
Oh, yes. So like if I take this to what, you know, like our phase three of franchising this model out, to be, and to give you an idea, the first place I would attack is we would do a kiosk at Chicago and O'Hare International Airport. Kind of like, I don't know how much you guys fly or, you know, but like, you know, Nuts on Parker is my favorite example. It's a, it's a guy in a very small square footage booth and all he does is sell different kinds of nuts right at Chicago and O'Hare, you know, O'Hare International Airport and whatever. So I thought the idea of doing a very small kiosk there because of the travel and see how that would be the test model. If that works, I do have people already interested in Phoenix and Denver and in Maryland and in Detroit to potentially purchase our first franchise locations where they would then get our bagels sent in frozen, bathe them the last five minutes and then serve them direct retail like an Einstein Brothers or whatever in big metropolitan areas. And then if that went well, I would consider doing a Chicago, Detroit.
And that would fit into this.
And then that's where, no, no, 5,000 can be sold here.
Well, I'm just wondering what the 5,000, what's your model for 5,000? Is that just regional wholesale?
That's just regional wholesale.
Then we jump into retail after that, which is a whole new.
Whole new thing. So the 5,000 a day that we're talking about being able to, well, actually, this, this facility, we'd be able to produce 7,000 if we wanted. But, you know, our goal is to, you know, to hit that 5,000 because I'm, I'm very confident that that's the amount of bagels that this region can take wholesale every day. This region specifically. Once that is successful and we see it flowing and all of that's good to go, that's what we're talking about. Yeah, let's consider building a giant dope factory that is outputting 50,000 a day and is sending them nationwide now to locations to then... And so, you know, no matter how big we take this, the home will always be here. And also, not only to, for one, again, the process is very important. Anyone who buys the equipment, anyone who buys the ingredients. The process is very important. The recipe is very important. We want to keep that under our cup. So that's one of the big reasons too, why we're always going to produce all of it here. And then no matter how, you know, because we don't want anyone having, you know, any access to the recipe and we don't want the quality of the product to not be exactly what it is in the process, you know, have any other corner spot, any, you know, all of it's very specific. The water temperature, the humidity in the air, you know. And so that's all the, the really difficult part of the process and requires the most skilled labor as well. So yeah, that 5,000 a day, that's just, if it's a wholesale market in this.
Yeah, I'm worried about what your increments could be. So when you get into that 5,000 square foot facility, how much equipment upgrading will you have to do in order to make that number?
50,000 to $60,000.
So you'll need another 60 for equipment.
Correct. Yep. Correct. 50 to 60,000. So if you amortize the whole kit and caboodle over the 10 years, it's 65 bucks a day. 175 grand plus your 60, take that over 10 years, that's $65 a day. $65 and 50,000, something like that. So, you know, when, in the grand scheme of like what it costs to put that in, you know, and, and I have personal credit and we feel like we both also have enough money that if we wanted to go buy that in cash, we couldn't. I'd rather not, especially when Sydney is offering you a grant. And so, you know, and, and also they have offered me a loan as well, the grant. You know, if I didn't want to wait for the grant because the grant wasn't going to be available, so starting now, and these conversations started a couple of months before we did our launch. So they were even willing to offer me a loan for the equipment back then. I just couldn't do anything with it because we couldn't power it and we had no place to put it. But John was trying to get us an oven that day. He's like, we can get you 8,000 for that new oven right now and we can get you the, you know. But it's just, I, I can't do anything with it. But once I have a facility, yeah, we'll be able to furnish it really quick. And then also I have construction skills and, and so forth. And so being able to do the work of the building, it's very simple. Again, all we need to do is throw a little bit of linoleum down in one spot and do a little bit of whiteboard in the kitchen area and everything else in the building is ready to go and looking good, even the plumbing and whatever. So you're talking about adding $60,000 worth of equipment. It's four ovens, two mixers, a bagel cauldron and a walking pool. That's it. We already own all the trays and speed racks. We already own all the other stuff.
Will you put together one, three and five-year financial projections?
I can. Yes, I can. Yeah.
I'd like to see those.
Absolutely. I'm sorry I didn't bring anything like that.
No, that's okay. That's just the first step.
Yep.
This building then we're talking about, what, what was it used before?
Old antique store.
Antique store, yeah. So you must have some upfront cost to transition this into a food processing plant.
Yeah, it's going to be about $2,000 in materials and we'll put that to work. Yeah, yeah, because it's like realistically, like it's mostly a wide-open space. And it's, you know, beautiful hardwood floors in one section, which is what we're going to cover. And that would be our packaging area. And the back section has concrete and tile, which would be where the dope processing and whatever. So yeah, it's all about just adding some whiteboard in the kitchen and, and what'll be the, you know, the kitchen space of that building. And so it's a very simple building actually, as far as I'm concerned.
Kerry, if we were going to proceed with this, one thing you'd have to do would have an appraisal loan.
Yeah, yeah, we would need to, to have an appraisal done. So we know what's, I mean, yeah, the owner can ask what he wants, but we want to make sure it's.
I agree. Yeah. And again, you know, I, I think it's a very reasonable amount of money because we priced out tons of buildings all over the area since we started this. You know, and even down the, we tried the Red Ponies, we tried to get the building on Main Street in Unitaville. We looked at O'Niana, we looked at the bagel shop on Main Street in O'Niana that's small. We, you know, it's a reasonable amount of money. I would love to get it lower, of course. If you guys say it's worth 165, we offer 160 or whatever. You know, I would love to pay less and I would absolutely want a professional thinking. I don't want to make a bad deal either, even though I know I can make it work financially. There's no sense in buying a, a building that's not going to truly be what it needs to be for the longevity.
You said $2,000 in material. Did I hear that right?
That's correct.
Outfit that, does that include the ancillary system and?
So we.
Is that part of your equipment?
We don't use that. We don't use that. See, we don't, an ancillary is not required because it's all of them. Yep.
Even if, did you put them in oil?
Nope. Nope.
No? I thought they were kind of heat fried.
No, so they get, no, so they get boiled in, right, so they get boiled in water.
Well, that's, that's huge costing.
Yes, they get boiled in water and then they get baked in a convection oven. So there's, yep. No?
Oh.
Yeah. So that's.
So you learn something new every day.
That's fine.
You gotta stop it when my bagels are in heat and dry oil.
I know.
There's a lot of work.
No wonder.
Getting back to the operational thing, when, when you transition from 650 square feet, now you're going to be, now you really are going to be a manufacturer. Your clients, your customer base, they're going to require things like standard operating procedures, quality assurance programs, the state probably will ask for really an SOP approach. Do you have that set up? Because that's one of the things that could get you up and running right away. If not, you're going to get bombed down and customers will not, will be reluctant to buy larger quantities unless they see that.
Okay, so we are actually working on doing all of the certifications down the line and having all of that worked out. Yep. And I've already even got, as soon as we leave here, depending on if you guys think this is something you're interested in, I've already got to talk to the, you know, I've got an insurance agent ready to start quoting me on all of this stuff from product liability and whatever and all, the whole gamut of everything from, you know, building insurance, the employees, the, you know, workers' comp and whatever and all that, you know. I do have excellent general estimates of what those things cost just from private experience and whatever. But, you know, that, yes.
It's one of the prepared for the audits that come with bringing a customer base of that size in. They'll come in, they will sit with you, they may even be more interrogating than the state in some ways to know what we're doing and how.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so we're also going to send samples to labs to get all the, you know, all the nutrition pack stuff and whatever we are working with. So our, our partner, we have a partner that's doing our merchandising and all of our labeling and packaging, local and city in New York. His name's Tim Schuber. He has all of the capabilities from the vinyl printing, UV printing, embroidery, laser engraving, all that kind of stuff. And so, and then we're, I'm going to, you know, I'll hire the firm necessary to get us all of the GMO certification, whatever, and, and all of that kind of stuff, which actually isn't too crazy and not as expensive as you might think to get all it, especially since we're running one single product, although there are 12 varieties of it. The recipe does not vary much other than, you know, in the toppings. And so like it's going to, you know, and because of where we're sourcing our ingredients and how, so like, I can already say that the cheese is GMO, whatever, because I'm.
They provide that to you when you are in.
That's right. So like, it, it's just a matter of getting it all together and on the label. And so, yes, and we have a, a marketing person and, and, and so forth that we will hire on a more full-time basis once we transition into this too. And that, that will be a consultant and help us through those things. Also, retailers like Pine Ridge and Weaver's and whatever, they've been gracious. And actually, the response in the community in general has been really cool. Everyone's been wanting to help us, even down to like, you know, the, the P3s. We're allowing us to buy flour through them because we weren't buying enough to get a trip for free and whatever, whatever, you know. So we've been, we've been really lucky there and, and they've been really gracious into giving us, you know, those informations and, and like how we got to do the cell by date and then whatever and all that kind of stuff. And so the other thing that we're looking into for long-term futures, since our shelf life is currently only about five to seven days in a bag with no refrigeration kind of deal, as it is hand-made and whatever, is natural anti-molding agents. And when I say an anti-molding agent, realistically, all it is, is we got to get a quantity of white distilled vinegar put into the boiling pot to bring the pH of the bagel within a region that it does not mold and can last upwards of 30 days, in which case it'll go stale before or whatever if it was mold. And then that's obviously also going to allow us. But again, we haven't had as much time for research and development since we started this whole mission. We've trained, kind of been moving and we've been rocking and rolling and even like, you know, we've managed to introduce five different flavors that were new by customer requests and that kind of thing. So yeah, we're, we're hungry and ready to go and all of that. And that's another big reason why getting a few people on the floor and being able to hire our first hands-on employees is going to really give me a lot more time and a lot more time to be able to focus on all the fine communities of, of that part of the business, absolutely.
Are you currently incorporated?
We are.
Which corporate structure, LLC?
It's an export LLC. First thing we did, lawyer and accountant. I learned my lesson after the first business. Yep, lawyer and accountant.
Anything else?
No.
Any questions for us?
Not really. I, I think you go to, you know, again, I just appreciate your time.
Yeah, we wish a lot and, yeah.
Yeah.
Hope we can help somebody.
Great, yeah. Love to know if you're interested and, and if you are, we'll, we'll have to go on running getting everything you need to, uh, sit down next month, I guess, is what you said, right? Yep.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you need any sort of?
Just, I, I, just some direction from you. If, if this is something that you are still interested in and want me to move forward to the next steps, then we'll take some time and pull together the financing and work with them on their profit loss and.
We almost have some ideas, but it's all new to me just exactly what you've got. Hi, in other words, you, you'll make proposals for the board, is that what you're saying? Hi, another year. You'll make proposals for the board, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so what I would do is basically pull together, you know, you asked for the one, three, five financial projections. We'll get that together. We'll get a portfolio of the building together. We'll do a draft. Thank you. We'll do a draft lease agreement to give you an idea of what that would look like and then present that to you next month.
Should we also do an appraisal on the building?
Yes, we should definitely do an appraisal on the building.
Can we avoid that at our cost?
We could, what we would do is we would pay for it now, but then put it into their financing so they would pay us back. So we would be at the cost if you decided not to do it.
For me though, to be able to make a decision like that on a building, you'd have to have an appraisal. I don't wanna get into K. S. Coon situation.
However, commercials, it's not cheap.
When we had it done on the building across the street, it was like sixteen hundred dollars, twenty-two thousand dollars, I think. It wasn't that.
Who did it?
Um.
I mean, was it, was it, was it a commercial?
She, she knows the.
Learned how difficult it can be.
That order, was that order in the bar?
No, 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 no. It was, um.
You gotta get the numbers.
Sue Baldwin? No, she knows the Baldwin's. Sue Baldwin, Sue.
Okay, so she's on Syracuse or something?
Yes, that one. Yes, her. Yeah, she did a great job. And actually, we put in a request about the airport appraisal as well, so maybe we'll get a discount for having him do both, I don't know. But we definitely, we definitely should do the appraisal. I know that the owner of the building is pretty, pretty hot to get out and sell. He, he just is ready to sort of move on. He has the antique company that is currently leased in the building. It's a month-to-month lease, so he, you know, he's just like, I wanna give them some direction because if you think you are gonna do this, I wanna give them enough notice because, you know, he knows the thighs and they're ready to just like move in and start tomorrow if they could, so.
There's somebody in there now, then.
There, there, yes, but it's an antique place and they know that the building's for sale and.
I couldn't think of an opposite business, you know, for as far as a facility goes, is it dusty antique storage and selling retail facility and then you have a kitchen, which you're gonna need clean rooms, you're gonna need standard operating procedures, you gotta have sign-offs, there's a lot of QA that's involved in here that's not mentioned. Two thousand dollars to change this building and, you know, if that becomes, if we write, put that in writing, it's just like, it doesn't have to be itemized.
Well, that, I mean, but that's not what has to do. I mean, our, our task here is to, you know, is it something that we wanna invest? Does it fit our mission statement?
Well, the job, I think, but what I'm saying is he has to have a plan that's concrete and specific and precise because you're gonna go from five thou, he's gone from six hundred to five thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I think they, I mean, they, they know what they're doing. I mean, this isn't something that they just like.
Oh, I just need them to, I need them just to verify that they know what they're doing, that's all.
Yeah, and they'll put, yeah, I mean, I didn't wanna have them do this whole like detailed thing for you if you're like, ah, we're not interested. But if you are, then that's a step here.
Fine, good, now that we know that that's right, well. I got a lot of drivers in some of the names they've mentioned that are also on board with this for John Redmond Day. You know, I've dealt with John on things in the past and he knows what he's doing and, you know, if he feels it's an investment in the community that'll succeed, then that's one box checked for me.
Yeah, I mean, I like that they wanna stay local. I like that they use local products. I mean, the job creation is great. I mean, I, I said to you last time, I don't wanna throw the word Giovanni around, but I, I feel like this has the makings of something really, really big. And for us to keep it in Shenandoah County and have a hand in that, you know, obviously doing our due diligence, which we hundred percent should do.
I mean, I have some questions about shipping bags to Arizona. That's a pretty, that's a challenging situation as it is.
But they've been testing it, right? They've been sending it to see how it, how it goes. That's smart.
Sounds like they're going about it the right way.
Yeah.
Or the test, yeah.
Like I see, I was, I didn't wanna get into the weeds with them and how you do this, how you do that, but at least just have an idea that, you know, they're they're gonna, they're gonna find that it's a whole different ball of wax when you're starting to create. Because he's not retailizing, creating little retail kiosks all over the country and selling and sending out, really send out a hundred bagels? What a bagel. I mean, that's, that's an experiment for this facility. It's the twenty thousand square feet where they get into that. Right, that would be stage two of the business, I like it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this plan is just local.
Right, Carrie, do you know how long you've been in business?
October.
You've jumped it.
Yeah, I mean, and he's not kidding about the demand. I mean, I, I have been at Déjà Vu and Roasted both when they come to deliver. And then they'll do out like a thing and people just let in. I mean, for the bagels, it's, I mean, people wait for them to say, hey, I've got everything bakery, you know, whatever. And they're sold out by, you know, midday of the, it's, he was right when he said about the thing dropping off. Like we were also like, oh, this is a fad or whatever, but it's not.
Oh, it's not, Hamilton has flour and salt and there are lines for them, but it's certainly concentrated at a certain time of the day when you get them and they're fresh. So I'm just saying, it's kinda curious how that could equate into large, in other words, they do so well locally, that's.
Yeah, I mean, what did he say? He has seven retailers locally on the waiting list that he doesn't even have product for and he can't even give the people who are ordering enough what they're, because he just doesn't have the space to produce.
Is this property big enough to expand to that twenty thousand square feet or?
Um, I don't have the land drawings. I know the building itself is that five thousand square foot. Yeah, I did that. I don't know. That's something we can ask next month is, you know, when they're going to do that twenty thousand, he said he wants to be local. Are you expanding on the current grounds or are you, I don't know how big the property is off the top of my head. I know that there's a couple outbuildings. I've seen pictures. I've got some details about the building. If he has a few.
If you would have expanded that quickly, we might have that building back, which would not necessarily be a good plan.
Right.
Before we wanted it back, you know.
Right, well, their, their lease agreement with us would be, it, it, it would be a lease with a buyout, you know, lease to own. So, I mean, the worst thing that would happen, worst case, which is what we're currently gonna be talking about with K. S. Coon, is that they can't make it work and it's whatever and they, they don't want the building and they don't have the money to buy out the lease. It would revert back to us and we would now own this manufacturing facility. I mean, that's the risk that we take. The hope is that they would either buy the lease out early or finish the lease and then be able to expand. And at that point, the building is theirs. I mean, if they do decide to move on.
That would be ideal.
That would be ideal, yeah. I mean, we talked about a ten-year lease, but I don't think they wanna have that kind of debt hanging out there if they can. And if things continue the way they think they're going to, you know, they might possibly buy it out even earlier. But I think ten years is what they were hoping to get it into.
Does this facility have a loading dock and?
It's, yeah, it's got a, yeah. And the business that's currently running it is only using part of it. They're not using the whole five thousand square feet. So it's really just a big open warehouse.
Right. So you would have to create rooms, cooking facility areas and?
Yeah, he was saying three, three different areas.
Cleanable and all the things that go on the food, yeah. Sounds, sounds good to me, but I can only take it at face value.
Right, right. We would definitely need to see financials and.
A deferred banker here. What does the IDA require in the past? What have you asked for in the past other than a presentation you must have requirements? Say you have to turn this in or?
Yeah, at this part, I don't.
I was mentioning some things, but there.
I, I would need to, we need to talk to our attorney because I have not done this yet for the IDA. I do it all the time for DCC and I'm guessing it's very similar because we're both beholden to the ABO. So I, I'm attempting, I'm approaching it the way I would somebody who goes to DCC for a loan. But I just want our attorneys to tell us, yes, you know, you need an appraisal, you need to do these things, but do we have to post it? I, you know, that part I don't know. We have to make sure it fits within our mission, which I think, I think this does. But yeah, I just need to get those details.
I would like to see a, a business plan, specific and precise plan. You can look at from the banking aspect and we can look at from logistics and see if it makes sense. So you gotta review that, don't you? But, but yeah, the thing that scares the Jesus out of me right now is you haven't been in operations since October. Yeah, it's a new venture. It's, it's definitely what I would consider a startup. I would love to have historical financials. You know, we're really at this point in time looking, we're only gonna have projections and we could ask for a couple of months of profit and loss saving, but that's not really gonna give us a, a great picture because it's only a couple of months. But, yeah, I, I, again, my, one of my biggest fears is getting stuck with another building.
Well, this is, this is what I worry about is, but as long, if the building is, comes in with appraisal higher than what we're looking for, you know, for the hundred and fifty-five thousand, it's just looking at the building then and saying, is it a viable building for somebody else? Because there is quite a few empty buildings, you know, that are happy and purchased up. I mean, the thing about how long it took us with the, with our indicator, we're here for it. But this is what the mission statement is for us to do, you know, so this is, this is our duty is to help foster and develop employment, jobs and that kind of stuff. And for, when we're looking at a, a, a mall, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and you've got a physical piece that goes with that. So the worth thing you're out is this business, but you've still got the building. But it just depends if the building is viable for somebody else. It's only happening. So it'd be nice when we get the appraisal to see. And I'm still trying to picture where it is in the Village of Bainbridge.
It's, it's on Route Seven between Bainbridge and Bainbridge and.
So maybe in the town, maybe in the town of Bainbridge and that isn't it?
Yeah, it's not in the village.
Still can't picture it. I know it very pretty well.
Oh.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be.
I know it's blue. I have this big blue building.
It's not, it's not, it's not.
It's owned by Doug Rice. Do you know him?
Town water and sewer, no? That would be a big one. Need a lot of water for bagels.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, apparently, because you boil them in water.
That's, yeah. Just, I will have to have like a little training session, like how does this work?
Yeah, I think it definitely fits our vision and mission.
Okay.
You know, so we need to move forward and look at this as a real opportunity.
Okay, well, go ahead.
If we could visit, I would, I would take a ride down with you to the building.
Sure.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we, we probably should at some point, I guess, as a board, at least as many of us that can, look at this building too, that we're gonna essentially, oh.
Well, this is what I'm trying to picture in my mind of where it is, like drive by and take a look at.
Yeah, I'll send you the address.
Okay. And some antiques?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be going out of business soon, we'd be upset.
All right. Good, I think it's a nice project. Thank you.
Yep. Good, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, back to the agenda, executive director's report.
Okay, I'll keep this brief. So just a couple of updates on the commerce shenango side. The Leadership Shenango Classic twenty twenty-two is gonna be starting soon. The facilitator did interviews with class candidates last week. And her, myself and the chair of the foundation board will be meeting later this week to go through that. We're looking at having about twenty-two students, which is a good year, so we're excited to get that kicked off. Oh, also, we're getting ready to roll out our twenty, twenty-two membership billings. They'll be going out in the mail this week and we're just finalizing our program calendar for the year. We will be holding a notary workshop on Friday, February eighteenth, I think that's the Friday. It's gonna be virtual. We do this every two years and so we're excited to be able to bring that back again. We will be holding the Economic Outlook Breakfast that MBT sponsors. We just don't have a date yet. We're looking to do it at the Norvich Classic Car Museum, likely late March or early April. We're waiting for COVID things to die down because we really would like to do this in person. Really would like to do it at the car museum. I know Bob is very excited about having us come over. So when I have a date on that, I will let you know because that's always worth attending. On the DCC side, I don't, how, I don't know how much you want me to get in detail about the DRI. I know we've talked generally about it, I think in our meeting last month, I, you know, that we won. So right now we're looking at rolling this out. Myself and new mayor of Norwich, Brian Oliver, are co-chairing the local planning committee. We're waiting to hear back from the state on their determination of who will serve on the local planning committee. We submitted about twenty names and they want twelve to fifteen people. So as soon as we have that established, the first meeting of the local planning committee will be at the end of January. There'll be a first public meeting will be in February. This will be a very fast-moving process. All projects and submissions are gonna, are gonna be received between now and about June. And June, July is when the local planning committee will make their recommendations to the state about where they would like to see the funds go, which projects they wanna move forward. There's a lot that goes into this. I don't, I don't wanna get into weeds too much.
Just real quick on that, so hearing what you're saying right now, it sounds like the project's gotta be approved at the local level first and the state's gonna also approve it?
That is correct. Yes. So yes, it is possible that the local planning committee puts forward a project that the state does not approve for whatever reason. They feel like you don't have enough information or the money's not there. So we have nine point seven million dollars that we have to allocate. They're recommending that we have twelve to fifteen million dollars that would actually put forward to the state. One, things might not get approved. Two, projects drop off. The person putting in the project, there's a lot of, you know, bells and whistles and kind of hoops you have to jump through. This money comes from the state, so there will be NWE requirements. There will be, you'll have to make sure you get assessments on buildings and inspections. It can't just be your uncle Bob that does the work as the contractor, you know. You're gonna have to certify contractors and you can't do the work yourself. And, you know, when some of those things happen, people sometimes, oh, I didn't know that. I didn't, you know, a lot of it, it's reimbursement. They don't wanna, you know, they don't have the means to put the money up front to get reimbursed. So a lot of things can happen from the time they put in an application to the final happening of this.
And I assume you have to pay a permanent wage on that?
I believe so.
You definitely have to, you do. We, we looked into this for our town hall and it did come with a lot of constraints and the money was not going as far as we thought it would. One thing that we found that we could do is if you had a qualified person to do the job, if they were sold to Pride or the Curvier wage, we're not applying. And that's, that was a big plus.
I think part of it depends to which division the money comes from. So the Empire State Development is one of the funding sources, NICE Certa is one, and then the Holmes and Community Rural HCR is the other one. Those are the entities that actually are putting the money in. Another thing that the group had been talking about doing when we first did the application is having a local fund. And we have a lot more control over that. The max that can be in a local fund is six hundred thousand. We had talked about doing a local fund to help with building owners in downtown be able to do upgrades in their building. You know, a lot of those people that own these buildings can't afford to do it because then they can't pass the, you know, that cost off to the renters. They would never make it back. If we created a local fund, there would be less of those state restrictions. It would be more this LPC would decide how that money is allocated, if it's a match, if it's a grant, how it's going to happen. So a little bit less restrictions, but it's a very small amount of the overall money.
So are you saying that there has to, there's a match for the city? Does the city have to put up, usually when you have a grant, you put up some, state puts up a lot and then you have to have your small hit?
No, it depends.
Does no one's put up anything at all? The city have any requirements for matching?
The city doesn't. I mean, right now, everything that has gone into the DRI financially was actually paid for by Development Shenango Corporation. So they're the ones that paid for everything. The city wanted to help us out with that. I'm not expecting that. So anything that's a nonprofit or municipal project is eligible for up to a hundred percent grant funded. Private projects would be sixty percent private investment, forty percent funded by the DRI money. So if the city is going to do a project, like we were talking about, the parking lots and the walkways and the safety, security part of the project, those could be a hundred percent funded by the DRI. They likely would have to come up with the money and they get reimbursed, but again, it depends on which funding stream. But yeah, those are eligible to a hundred percent, which is exciting.
A private, there has to be?
A forty, forty.
Forty and who's probably forty? The owner or just the local?
The, yeah, the developer. So, you know, one of the big projects that, you know, we, is in this list is the hotel project. Just as an example, a developer could put in for the money to do what they need to do to make the hotel happen. Forty percent of that could be reimbursed by the DRI. But yeah, it's, there, there's a lot. I did wanna address too, I'm trying to do this in all of our meetings as possible. I talked about this with the Shenango County Planning. I know there was a big article in the front page of the paper about how some of these funds could be used for the water issues that Norwich is having. That is a hundred percent ineligible. I, we, I had those conversations with the mayor. I had it, you know, we, we talked about it generally. You know, I think they just got talking about it at a meeting and not everybody had all the facts and ends up on the front page of paper that, you know, this money's gonna be used for the water issues. That is a hundred percent ineligible. That is not going to happen. We had a conversation with the state about it. That's considered a deferred maintenance issue and those are not eligible for DRI money. So just letting you know that in case somebody asks you about it. You know, it's unfortunate.
Is there our money on that?
Yeah, well, that, that's what the state said basically. So just, you know, again, something gets out there in the public though and now it's in people's minds and then the next thing you hear is why wasn't the DRI used for this? It's ineligible. So there'll be a lot more about that coming up. And then I just, you know, also attached to your packet was the economic development report for December. Carrie Anne's been very, very busy. We, you know, I think it's great we take a look at the number of people she's been talking to about people looking for funds, wanting to start a business. You know, she's extremely busy and she does a great job keeping on top of all of it. But if you have any questions about that, you're just there for you to review and that's it on that.
Hold on.
This should be quick. Okay. Um, so the comptroller report, uh, we're still waiting, um, to get our draft report of the findings. They said it could be two or three months. So we did have our exit interview with them on December 16th. I don't recall if that was before or after our last meeting. Um, oh, it was the day of our last meeting. So we had our exit interview with them that afternoon. No surprises, everything that we talked about in terms of process and, um, I don't expect any, any major issues from that report. Um, they've, you know, they've acknowledged that we've already made a lot of those changes. We've already implemented processes and procedures. They're very happy about that. We do get an opportunity to respond to the draft report where we can outline the changes and the steps that we've taken. So, uh, we're just waiting for that report from them. Um, no update on the solar project. So Norbit, um, our attorney, Carrie Anne reached out to our attorneys, uh, on Monday, I think it was, or late last week, and asked what was going on with both the, the wind project and Norbit because we're just waiting to close. They, they said that they reached out to the attorneys for both projects and we're just waiting to hear back from them. So at this point, I think they're just fine tuning the paperwork. Um, both should be closing fairly soon. Um, new business, um, actually, I don't have an update on Kaskun, so, um, we are waiting to get, uh, some word of those details from our attorney about Sunset and the pilot. Making sure we do proper notifications to the village and to the county. Um, we did accept that at the last meeting. I don't have anything for other uses for the property yet. I don't know if, you know, once everything closes with this in a couple of weeks, if you want to go see the property. I, I've only been by it a couple of times. It's not in any great shape. Uh, but once we have full ownership of that, I think I'd check it. We have a ton of people who had already reached out interested in the property. Um, it's very possible we could flip it ourselves internally, um, and not have to do a whole lot of marketing for it. So hopefully that helps for that. Um.
Would we be looking to lease that or hold no or just sell it outright?
That's up to you. I mean, I, I don't, if we could just be done with it, I think that's, that would be great, especially if we're looking on getting into some of these other projects. But that's, that's up to you. I mean, it's, it's a very specific kind of property. It's not in great shape. It's, the land itself at this point is probably more valuable than the building. But that, that's up to you. And then just if you had any comments back about the mission statement and performance goals, we're gonna be working, that'll be part of our annual meeting in March. Um, so just let you know, if you, please email me if you had any comments or questions about if we should be changing other of those things. And we'll be working with our auditors on the, on, on the financial audit, which will be part of our March meeting as well, when we do our annual meeting. The March meeting is a longer one, so, comfortable, we'll have coffee. And then finally, uh, the incubator property, again, we're, we're sort of at a standstill with that. We are, our next step is to do a break. Um, so just working on getting that scheduled. And since we can get that scheduled, we can do our letter to the ABO and, and, you know, let them know. So I think we just need the final appraisal. You need to accept the appraisal and the offer amount, which hopefully the appraisal can be completed before our next meeting. We decide that we want to sell it, we accept their offer, and then we write our letter to the ABO and then we have about 90 days. And that is all I have unless you have any questions.
Any questions on anything that just got carried, just went over? Great. Do we have a need for executive session?
I don't unless you do.
Does anybody need to go into an executive session? Awesome. Need a motion to adjourn?
How about to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, aye. Thank you. Reading adjourned.
Thank you.